Madam Court.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners Public Meeting, Tuesday, October 4th, 2022. The time is now 7:08. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 9th, 2021, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted in the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca is absent excuse this evening. Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present mayor except for Commissioner Petracca. He's absent excuse this evening.
Minutes, Madam Court.
Thank you, Mayor. We have regular meeting minutes for August 16th, 2022, September 6th, 2022, and September 20th, 2022.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
We also have executive session minutes for September 6th, 2022.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for minutes, Mayor.
Communication.
Thank you, Mayor. The Nutley Department of Public Affairs has submitted an event application for a spooky sprint, a two-mile walk around Kingsland Park, scheduled for Saturday, October 29th, 2022, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And the Spring Garden School PTO has submitted an event application for movie night scheduled for Friday, October 14th, 2022, from 5:30 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. at the Spring Garden School, located at 59 South Spring Garden Avenue. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Okay, just turn the agenda around a little bit. We have Elvin Pereira, the Home Improvement Advisor from the SS County Division of Housing and Community Development, to give a short presentation. Mr. Pereira? Come on up to the microphone.
Thank you for the invite. Again, my name is Elvin Pereira. I run the SS County Home Improvement Program. We've been doing so for over 30 years. I'm here to quickly provide some information to so that the town of Nutley, well, the homeowners of Nutley can take advantage of our home improvement program. We're right now conducting workshops where we provide extra details on all the stuffs necessary to become eligible and what steps to take as far as the work that's going to be done at their house, because it's also supervised by us. So what we're asking from Nutley is an opportunity to come in, do a workshop, where we can go into details and provide them step by step on how to get started. Recently, we've done a couple workshops in Montclair-Belvo, and I would say by the end of December, there's going to be about six or seven homes that are going to be done, meaning the work completely done from just those workshops alone. So thank you, and I hope that you guys may have some questions. I also expect an invite so I can come back and do your workshop.
Guarantee an invite.
All right.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Is it income dependent?
Oh, it's it's an income-eligible program depending on how many people live in the home, but it's adjusted gross. So people say make $100,000. We don't care what you use care what you bring home as far as the net. If the IRS says your adjusted gross is this amount, it's amount of money that we care about, that's all.
So so that to be eligible, that income depending on how many people are living in the house?
Correct. Correct.
About a family of four? You have that number?
I have the number here, may I look?
Sure.
Well, we help multiple if 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 a homeowner a homeowner owns up to a three-family, but only had it. All right, I'm going to start really quick with the income. For one, for a single person. Okay, for a single person, the adjusted gross, adjusted gross income is $62,600. This is for one person. For two people, $71,550. For three people, $80,500. For four, $89,400. For five, $96,600. For six, $103,750. For seven, $110,900. And for eight, it's $118,000.
So it definitely has to do with your adjust, that's adjusted.
That's adjusted gross.
All right. So let's see when we can set up a workshop and give us enough time to get some publicity out there.
I'll let Kathy know.
All right. We'll work through this Russian. Bieszewski.
Mayor, just a quick question.
Emergency repairs will address right away. So if somebody comes in that their boiler doesn't work, certain things that we, in order to get them eligible and work done immediately. In other words, a lead is not requested. Lead inspection, which takes some time and some month, we just go in there and do the work. Type of work, we do roofing, electrical, plumbing. We don't do any landscaping unless it's interrupted with the foundation of the home. But basically, everything else that's attached directly to the house, we will work with.
Or is it a forgiveness program? How many years?
10 years.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking is we tried to do a couple of programs in Nutley with the county a number of years ago, but COVID got in the way. Yes. There's both good and true, but Sessi from my department, she's sitting over there, has been trying to reach someone to arrange a meeting to go over how these programs could be coupled. I'm very interested in actually making sure that happens. Thank you.
One more question. What about lead line replacement? Lead line replacement? curb stop. Yeah, curb stop, yes. I have two more. What's the interest rate for the homeowner? You said it was a loan that becomes a grant? So it's a 0% interest rate? And? Okay. And then is there any particular projects they discuss with Commissioner Evans that are prioritized over others? So maybe, for example, environmentally friendly type projects, which would get prioritized over others? Or it's just any project that comes in the door?
Anytime, the only thing that we that we put in front of the list is emergency situation.
Okay.
That's it. We don't, we don't skip, no. If emergency, we don't care what it is, they go to front of line.
Just one quick thing, would that include basement repairs to avoid mitigate flooding? Would that include mitigating flooding potential in the basements of homes?
A lot of times, yes, we do what we have worked. As a matter of fact, not being a Belvo, we did a flood basement. Water went up to the first floor from basement all up to the first. We addressed that as well. Okay?
Yeah.
We we cleaned down, replaced a boiler, repaired. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Pereira. Thank you, Kathy, for arranging him to come in.
Thank you.
Alvin, have a good night. All right, let's move on. We have a proclamation on tonight for one of our long volunteers to the township of Nutley, Mr. Anthony Iannarone. He's had over 50 years of service at the Nutley Public Library, 36 of those years as the president of the board. So we're going to, the Board of Commissioners is going to read a little bit of each. John, didn't get to speak to you, but can you take those last two?
Sure.
Of us, and now therefore. All right. The mayor and the Board of Commissioners hereby issued this proclamation. Whereas Anthony J. Iannarone, born December 15th, 1930, and a citizen of Nutley since 1959, was appointed by then-mayor Carmen Orecchio in the month of September of 1972 to fill the four remaining months of an unexpired term as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Nutley Public Library. And whereas thereafter, Tony has been reappointed to the board 10 five-year terms by mayors Carmen Orecchio, Harold Chenoweth, Gary Fornari, Peter C. Scarpelli, Joanne Caciulla, Anthony Alfonso Petracca, and Dr. Joseph P. Scarpelli. And whereas in September 2022, Tony, affectionately known by the staff as Mr. I, completed 50 years as a board member, longer than any elected or appointed board member in the history of Nutley, has served as vice president and has served for 36 years as president. And whereas working with these other board members and library staff, library has been transformed from a depository and circulator of books of phonographic records into a fully computerized information center. And?
And whereas some of the highlights of the library's transformation occurring. 45 million dollar extension, extension of service to 60 hours for adults and children. The first SS County Library, the third county cooperative library system, greatly expanded facilities and facilities. Complete computerization of the library, many new programs for all ages, including hundreds of children. Establishment of the Friends of the Nutley Public Library, of which Tony is the founding member and for which he attended to their incorporation in 501(c)(3), IRS charitable status, gala township events attended by hundreds to honor centennial and the library's centennial. Hosting of additional important events such as the Nutley Hall of Fame induction, Rotary Club Dinner for Teachers, Women's Month programs, establishment of permanent gift funds presently totaling more than $530,000. Acquisition of a Steinway Studio Grand Piano. Monthly art or photography and other exhibits obtained a state grant to build a handicap ramp and retaining walls. Whereas Tony's greatest contribution to the library is one of his most important principles that characterizes his leadership. First is the power of community, collaborative and transparent relationships with the Board of Commissioners and educators. Library is a quality placement, a major transformation. Having the library serve as a cultural and information center not just for students, but for teachers. Having a valid, innovative place with the possible advances in cultural change, building and maintaining an excellent standard, letting their bills be appreciated. Trustees are not librarians, even not exempt. And whereas for the first 38 years of his tenure at the library, Tony enjoyed the support of his beloved wife of 55 years, acting Iannarone, and continues to enjoy their three children, Lisa, Brian, and David, and their seven grandchildren, Elise, Caitlin, Matthew, Kimberly, Tess, Mary, and Daniel. Now therefore, we proclaim that the mayor and the Board of Commissioners of the township of Nutley extend their congratulations and best wishes on Tony's attending his 50th anniversary as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Nutley Public Library. Thank him for his continued selfless and dedicated service to the township, not only through the library, but also through his many other community activities. And on October 16th, 2022, we hereby proclaim the name of the children's room of the Nutley Public Library of the Anthony J. Iannarone Esquire Children's Room.
Congratulations, Anthony. Well done.
Congratulations.
There will be a, there will be a ceremony on the 16th at the library to name that that room, the children's room after Anthony. So it's limited seating, so it's no cost, but you do have to register to attend. Let's move on to reports. Department of Public Works has one progress report. Let's move to bills. Madam Court.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for October 4th, 2022, public affairs, $81,542.67. Revenue and finance, $3,302,977.04. Public safety, $69,547.98. Public works, $78,118.78. Parks and public property, $710,749.50. Water utility, $995,955.67. Payroll as of September 16th, 2022, regular payroll total, $815,668.90. Overtime payroll total, $49,495.90. Total payroll, $865,163.99. For a grand total of $6,104,055.63. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Good.
Commissioner Tucci? Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners reporting community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for record. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer to his comments to the appropriate member of the board.
Only more 111 to say, Kathy. Mayor, on your ordinance 3501, see that the last portion of it. When I over that or asked for the ordinance, it was three of the plans. Do you have it down to one plan yet?
Mr. Moore, this this is.
It's no more that it's a plan. It actually sets the zoning for that area. It's not a plan.
No, yeah, I just, I just curious because it looks as though that's the the ordinance, it's supposed to be published. I was just curious, and when and if it's going to be published.
Ordinance will be published in the next newspaper, which is next Thursday. It's to be introduced before it's published, and we introduce this evening.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify because it's whether it's published or is there a plan? That was my real question to ordinance. I was thinking, and can I do the bills now? Is that okay?
Sure.
I'm here, there's a number of bills for legal municipalities. It looks like it might happen. I'm curious, since we pay, I believe it's $2,500 a year. That's the final, the final conditions. It's all over page one line. It goes on, it's 1821, 24, 27. I'm just curious, when did we go down? 40.
Mr. Moore, legal municipalities has a conference in November. This is, I'm not, I'm not going to comment on anybody else, but for Public Works, those are the registration fees to attend the, to get onto the floor of the convention center.
The reason I'm asking this question is because last year, I called the league and I spoke with attorneys. They explained everything to me because I filed open as an attorney. I just didn't have a name, I don't have a license for these classes. Because according to the league, you can register for a class, but you don't have to go because nobody knows if you want to. I'm just incredibly wasting money on the league again. This is a, this is a giant part.
Classes, there were technical tests, or any of these. So, maybe other officials, something that's on the works. That's for me to register to get on the convention floor. Very.
So we're paying to go look at it. We're paying, there's a big convention. You can sign.
We're paying to actually look at it. Convention.
Pardon me?
Have you ever been to the convention?
Yes, I have. Have, yes.
Been on the convention floor?
Yes, I have.
Much different than on the end. Really is.
So you're paying to go look at it. I just wanted to make sure.
There's a. Information.
Correct.
Okay. Basically, over here, on the last page, I believe you have water. It's $260. It's the last page. I always ask online numbers and pay. The last page. Water is killing me, $260 to the legal municipalities. So we're paying $260 to look at equipment for water department.
Yes, we have a couple of mechanics that will be down there looking at equipment. We'll have our supervisors down there looking at equipment. Very important. $60 is a lot of money.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it is.
Okay, okay. Very important to the operations.
Carmen Orecchio always, the taxpayer. Thank you.
I didn't say that. Anybody else wish to address on the agenda only?
Hi. There's a number of us here who are.
Luisa, please.
There's a few of us here who are concerned with citizens from the neighborhood, the former Chickara, Chickara. So to see, so tomorrow on, it was just supposed to be be a architect making a presentation of details on the zoning board.
So so.
Is that where we're going to find out more details about which has?
No, again, so we introduce today. It goes. It's consistent. It is consistent with the master plan.
It's consistent to the master plan. There's no, there's no plan in this. Part of Franklin Avenue.
Okay, and then the part as far as, because we had seen on the three RFPs, as far as which is being selected, is that going to happen after that November 1st? And that will be what, September 1st? Yes. All right, very good.
I'm expecting redevelopment on November 1st. The ordinance and what it. Go to adopt the ordinance on November 1st. It'll be public comment. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing non-Board of Commissioner announcement?
I wonder.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. On October 18th, Tuesday.
Mr. Kelly? Yes, we're going to have another. Vaccinated yet, you get your first COVID vaccination shot. Now we also have flu shots, consult the. Congratulations, Commissioner Tucci. Put the raincoat down, just just enough for us to get it. Ordinance introduction. Ordinance number 3500. He heard on ordinance number 3500. Seeing on the. Hi. Great. About 18 United States women, about 12.4% would develop invasive breast cancer over the course of her lifetime. Whereas in 2022, estimated. Development.
It's a. Thank you.
Hi. Uh, these second one I have on. The resident. New. The resident. The resident. The resident. The resident. The resident. Seventy, seventy-five. Second. The resident. 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 Seventy, seventy-five. The resident. 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 The continental Navy was suspended in 1785. It was reestablished as an official department on April 30th, 1798. The United States Navy recognized. The national domestic violence. The worst part.
Violence are encouraged to call the domestic violence hotline, reach out to the local agents and police departments for assistance. Now therefore be resolved, Board of Commissioners.
Nineteen between the hours of day thirty. Finance. Jersey statute for calling for yes three dot three, three dot thirty two, guides more veteran, more honor. The tax they're eligible now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of not least any of Essex State of New Jersey that property perna be granted full exception.
He has need for fire specialized professional services as a fear and open contact pursuant to division of NJ state. Take time.
Hi Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor's propel.
Hi. Where is Department of Clarkson Public Property?
Thank you.
He has to acquire specialized professional services for response to NJ DEP for. Contract this for twelve months. Patient has not made any reportable contributions to a political or county committee in the town, but not least in the previous one year. Whereas Americans have contributed to the United States of all. Art, science. State of New Jersey and the United States of America. Uh developer is.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor's.
Hi. Whereas nothing is a member of the.
Now therefore be resolved. To tilt on New York six twenty five Mount Road Wharton for the period January first twenty twenty two, number thirty first twenty two, and whereas nothing utilizing Morris County co-op. They approved the assertion of any special item in the budget. He ain't being the same as here by.
Okay.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Oh. For him. Some happens by already.
Let me say I have no. I have a conversation. Or street from forty four park. Handicap. And I believe you have to put a code. Order code to them.
At my doors?
Yes, you can do it as part there.
Okay, they help out, all right? I have a huge year to help out with the program, they help out with the football program, my grandson that participates and the code.
Actually, I do.
Beats.
Stay out, kiddo. Case of approach, I remember, yeah.
Yeah. You think we.
Need a motion to adjourn. Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
He said I had a way out.
Thank you. Commissioner Tucci. Commissioner.